All the North Plains Planning Commission meeting for February the fourteenth order at seven o'clock. Please rise for the.
The agents of the United States of America.
Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But please get the roll call.
Thank you Chair King.
Here.
Vice Chair Levante.
Here.
Commissioner Hal.
Here.
Commissioner Ken Odell.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Van Domlin.
Here.
And your ex officio tonight is Commissioner Wes Sheldon.
Present.
Here item number four is public comments because I know there's a lot of for anyone in the audience or on Zoom that wishes to take comments or about anything about planning commission business that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone?
There's no one on Zoom.
Tonight.
Record showing no one on Zoom and only one in the audience. So item number five is the approval of the minutes for January tenth two thousand twenty-four. Have any corrections or comments or additions? Enter Dan motion.
I think we approve the January ten uh two thousand twenty-four regular session minutes as written.
Uh all second.
Then. We sure it was a question? Then moved by uh. Commissioner Levante and second by Commissioner Miller for approval of January ten two thousand twenty-four minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed. Extending. If the minutes are approved. Item number six unfinished business. We have one application before for the Commission vacancy. Apparently this second one we had withdrawn their.
That is correct. We did have um the one of the two applicants withdraw them themselves from consideration.
Uh Mr. Farah appeared last meeting and some of you were not here so you'd like to come forward please. Yeah, and if you don't mind just state what those reasons why you'd like to join the plan.
Yes. So getting to everyone, I need to announce your far out here last month and I have.
Not sure your mic is on. Maybe pull it up. Okay.
So hopefully you're leading some of the last part and. And uh recently here to the North Plains people being very much committed. And um here for a long term with my family um. Looking forward to being part of our plane and be part of the community while we now. And really excited. A lot of history on my end to work which we are hoping for. For the past twenty-eight years now and I want to get that first. I have dealt with city council. Really excited to start planning title. Looking forward to. Do you have any questions?
Any question from the commissioners? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we have one vacancy. We have one applicant. So we're looking for a motion would be a recommendation to city council for their approval or denial but. Also I'll entertain the motion.
Recommend Mr. Farah to the city council for um to fill the vacant. Plan and commission.
Okay, so there is a motion on the table for uh recommendation to city council for Ms. Farah for the vacant planning commission. Moved by Commissioner Levante, second by Commissioner Van Domlin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
So opposed. Next step to city council.
And that will take place Tuesday night, the twentieth.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're you're welcome to be excused. His daughter's birthday is today.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah. Yeah, you got a white word out.
All right, so we'll move on to item number seven is the new business. Uh the final commission handbook discussion.
Yes. Thank you, Chair King. Let me uh share the screen here. Scroll down to the right stuff here as um. You may have seen this afternoon, I I sent you all a copy of of the handbook just because um I wanted to make sure you had a copy. Um I wasn't quite sure how it came to you uh when Lori sent everything out. And I didn't want to print up all these pages, so I wanted to make sure you had PDF copies of everything that we're we're sending out. Um if you would like a printed copy, let me know. I'm happy to print a copy for you. Um but this is really our our first attempt at putting together a planning commission handbook. Um so this is addition one is basically a a living document that will probably evolve over time. Um particularly uh the last part of the handbook where we we kind of staged some questions, some scenarios for you to kind of think about, kind of work through. Um I think we want to do more of that. Um just for, you know, primarily new planning commission members that haven't sat in your chair yet and aren't really sure, you know, how to respond maybe to um applicants and and the public. So we're just trying to give them some some scenarios to think about that, you know, could arise over their time here as a planning commissioner. Um so the handbook uh is pretty self-explanatory. Um it it kind of just goes through really what uh what it means to be a planning commissioner. Um you know, some of your uh roles and responsibilities. What a quorum is. We have a bunch of different acronyms in there. We we kind of give some context on how we got into the state planning program to begin with. So a lot of folks don't really know that history, so we wanted to provide that. Um and what you'll see is this document together with the other documents that I provided you. Um really tell the whole story, if you will, of the Oregon land use planning system. So um you know, we also provided you with um. The introduction guide to land use planning for small cities and counties in Oregon. This has been around for some time. As you can see, it has a January two thousand seven date on it. Um this is what a lot of jurisdictions hand out to their planning commission as the handbook. So again, we just kind of set it in there as a supplementary document for you. Um and that's the same thing with uh the final document. Which is. Where'd it go? As you can see, they are big. It's the Oregon Planning Commission Handbook from the League of or APA and they this was partnered with the League of Oregon Cities and so again, just um probably some redundancy, but just a different perspective. Um just some more information on the land use planning program and what it means to be a planning commissioner, the importance of that role. Um and so I I don't really have anything specific to go over in any of these documents, but I'm here to help answer any questions you may have or any concerns you've seen with the handbook. Uh if you don't like a section or you want more information, uh that's really what I'm trying to gather tonight and and really over time, you know, you might not have had time to look at all these things. So uh in the future, if you get some time to look at this and you have questions or want to bring some something forward that we might want to consider putting in the handbook, please bring all that to me and and we will make sure that we can uh get it in there for you. So uh with that, I'll just really open it up to the planning commission to see if they have any comments on the handbook. Do you like it? Um do you not like it? Do you want something else in there? Uh so this is your opportunity, I guess, to share with me uh your thoughts on it.
Uh the first question I have is are some of these been publication, paper publications?
I'm sorry, checking.
Some of these documents in paper publications?
Um I don't have them printed at the moment.
The Oregon one. You just got them electronically, so they have not haven't been published anywhere.
That's correct. That's correct. I think if that's the direction people want to go is to have hard copies, we probably would work with um a printing company to get them printed up because they are such large documents. Uh and we would probably want to get them bound for you. So you know, it's um something that you can hold on to and use regularly.
That's actually kind of where I'm leading to because I just think if you're going to give somebody something, sometimes it's better to have it a physical uh document than and check it out to them or something like that. I mean, when I started a number of years ago, we had a binder and you checked out number four was mine.
Okay.
I have to remember my number.
There was only nine of them. Uh anyway, so but yeah, if that's, I mean, you don't want any undue expense to the city because of it, but I just think especially for new commissioners, you know, it's nice to have something physical of. Some people are more tactile and that's it.
I absolutely agree. I think those tangible things go a long way.
Yeah, if they aren't available, then we can buy binders and, you know, print everything out and make not three ring binders, better binders than that that lay flat.
Yeah, just kind of the spiral binders.
Um. Print them out for you, but I have a note to look and see if there's a place we can get hard copies.
Yeah, yeah, I will follow up with um city manager Andy Viner and and come up with a solution to get some hard copies, whether it's a um printing up one copy of everything and doing it on a checkout basis or printing multiple copies. Um fortunately, we we don't have a lot of turnover, so um I don't think, you know, if we if we print them up one time, that should be uh pretty good and we could just have a couple extras laying around for for future. Uh but I I don't think that'll be a problem and and it's probably a really good idea.
This this seem to the some people will probably want to make notes in them and shut, you know.
Absolutely.
Uh it'd be nice to have their own so that they could feel comfortable about it and that. Uh the other thing is is obviously this is a lot of material and to do that step online, you're going back and you know it's different s- settings and seeing it where a a a physical book you can put a marker and say, oh, I'm here. Just my opinion.
No, I I think it's a good comment and certainly something I had already thought about. So it's good to hear that you would also like that.
So the goal of this package is basically just allow somebody to come and sit down and now watch your expectations bar and basically give you a guidance in steps and procedural.
Yeah, I think it's a a way to help catch people up to what happens here at the city uh at the planning level. A lot of folks don't have um a full understanding of the program, all the goals, um some of the terminology, um things of that nature. So it's just something to hopefully get people up to speed quicker. Um as they come onto the planning commission. Uh it may also help them formulate some questions that I can help them with so they can also kind of better understand the process and and what we do here in land use planning world. But uh it certainly doesn't cover everything. That's why we added these additional materials uh as some uh kind of uh backup, if you will, to the handbook, just to maybe answer some additional questions or provide some more in-depth um responses to some of the stuff I've already highlighted in the handbook.
Do you plan to publish it for the public consumption or just the parts that are kind of bits for people that might be wanting to have the book?
I'm not sure I totally captured all that.
Do you plan to publish it for the public?
No.
Okay, just the parts that are related to the advice for testifying.
Like I said, I think we're going to change that section from the advice on how to testify to um potential questions that you may get and then provide some potential responses to those questions. So I I think um after talking it over with Andy and and some other folks in our office, um they kind of didn't like that approach that I had in there. It was like, well, maybe that's not what we need. Maybe we need to pose questions. You know, and so that's why I said it's kind of a living document. I think uh very shortly here I'll be changing that. Uh so that's another reason why I sent it out as a PDF right now because it is is kind of a draft, but if anything changes, it's going to be those last few pages, not nothing in the main body.
But and just to clarify, that's directly situated for this side of the table, not for the.
That's the purpose of it. That's correct. And and so in terms of the other two documents that I I have here, that's readily available information that you can find online. If you go to um DLCD's website, both of these documents are on the DLCD website. Um if somebody wanted a copy, we would, I would send them the PDF. Um but we're not going to have a bunch of published copies of this for the public. It's it's really for the planning commission's benefit.
Any other questions, comments?
So the two documents, the basically the two documents, one of them is stat, we're not a modified list because they're not our documents, basically. It's just this new one. I'm sorry, I have the copy that came with our packet, so they're not broken out.
Yeah, like I said, those are just supplementary um documents um to provide some additional context on the land use program, uh the goals, uh that type of stuff. Um it it just basically takes some of the things that I've highlighted and and goes into a lot more detail. But what would be great is uh, you know, as you have time to go through the handbook and and look at it and read through it. Um if you see something that uh you would maybe like me to expand on, or um if you'd like a an additional section added, uh that would be really great feedback.
Page is the North Plains. That's where they're hoping for.
It's uh forty-three pages. Well, I I should take that back because I'm looking at the wrong document. It actually says forty-three. Yeah, forty-three.
There is a title on you have TSP on page of fifteen of the packet. And there's a and then a regular third flex and uh framework. It was adopted in twenty-fifteen.
What uh what?
The last, the last bullet or says was adopted in two thousand fourteen, the TSP.
Oh.
Then it was adopted in two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
Thank you for catching us. So let me ask you this, the if as we review this and you're would also be looking for uh maybe ways to lay it out more efficiently?
I mean, any any comments you have, I will take into consideration and and incorporate as it as it can be incorporated.
As you, I haven't really had a chance to look at it all too much, but.
Sure, sure.
Uh Commissioner Levante, it's already suggesting that there's a little difficulty in
Like I said, uh we want to make it user friendly for you. So if you're seeing something that uh you think could be done better, let us know and we'll certainly uh try and make sure we can get that in there.
Yeah.
It's nice to have though because we never had anything like this. Just jumping with what we.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, um.
What we had.
I appreciate hearing that. I'm glad that you think it's a step in the right direction.
We had the comprehensive plan and its own.
Well, they used to get training though. We had training a couple of times and feedback and things and um.
Some cities do have these handbooks and and some don't. Um we did look around and and to see what other folks were doing. Um and this is kind of a hybrid, if you will, of some of what those cities are doing. Um we kind of took some of the good parts and added to them and uh it sounds like we could do more to to make it a little bit more user friendly. So I'm looking forward to getting your feedback. You know, one of the things we did is we we used our rare volunteer as kind of our guinea pig uh to go through this for us because that person would be like a new planning commission member coming on board. Um and uh Roland posed a lot of great questions. It was really a good exercise uh for all of us. So um uh that's why I'm looking forward to getting your feedback too.
When you, when it's all said and done, do you actually expect it to be like three a handbook content and then all three books?
Um yeah, well, you know, some jurisdictions had all these grouped together as their handbook and it was like a hundred and eighty pages. I just wanted the handbook to be its own document and then have some support documents separately for you. Uh so I'm not going to group them all together into one binder. Um I'll print them all up for you if you want all of them.
No, I'm just, I was just curious because we have a handbook contents and then we go another page and then you start with.
So yeah, looking forward to to getting your comments. Um and uh it's a living document. Like I said, this is this is version one. Um I'm sure we'll get to uh version twelve somewhere down the road as we continue to get new planning commission members and as things continue to evolve.
Definitely. That is what we had yesterday.
You're right. Thank you, Chair King.
Any other comments on the handbook? So we'll move on then to item number eight, land use applications and the city uh project, the monthly report.
Yeah. So we uh our land use applications have picked up as you can see from the table that was provided there. Um we have now received a building, we now received a design review application for Frank's excavation over off West Union Road. So uh we just completed our completeness review of that application and sent out an incomplete letter, uh very minor incomplete items, just a a couple of things we needed. So I think it's going to be a quick turnaround. Uh once we get that, we'll send out our notice. Uh that's a two-week process. And then um you know, we'll start getting ready for a planning commission meeting uh that I'm anticipating probably in um April. Will probably be the by the time we can can get to that one. Um we've received some other um applications from Lenar for some minor variances. Uh they also are doing a uh minor replat of um a section of uh phase three. Uh the townhome lots just didn't meet the the widths that they needed, so they had to move the line one foot down the road there to to get it to work. So we're working through that with them. Um trying to think of the other. They're doing both. They're, well, no, they're doing a replat and they're doing a a variance. Yeah, so instead of, because they're changing the lot line on so many lots, uh they need to go through the replat process for that since it's a planted subdivision. Um so that's why they're not doing the a a series of lot line adjustments. Um and then they need to do, it's about a twelve-inch variance on every lot to get the porch set back to work. Uh so it's some really, really minor stuff. Um but uh it doesn't meet the standard, so we got to go through the process. Um we've received a lot of sign permit. Well, we've received several sign permit applications in the early part of this year. We received one for Happy Play. We received one for Melly's Bar and Grill. We received one for um I think it's Sun Country Rentals. Is that what it is over there off of West Union? The Sun, I can't remember the full name. Sun Country, Sun Country Rentals. Um the frustrating part is that these sign companies um seem to want to take advantage of North Plains and they are all putting their signs up prior to me issuing the approval for their signs. Um which is problematic for a lot of reasons because I don't know how they're getting a building permit from the county if I'm not giving them a letter. And how are they getting their electrical permits? Because all these signs are lit. Um so we need to work with the county to figure this out. There's a bit of a gap here right now in communication. So uh that's not what we want. We've put all the sign companies on notice to not do that and that if they decide to go forward and and do that again, because one company now has done it twice. Uh that they would be fined for every day that the sign is up before they receive land use approval. So um we want to make sure they understand that, you know, just because we're a small community doesn't mean you get to come in here and and act differently than you would in Tigard or Hillsborough or anywhere else. You know, you got to wait. We were very quick at getting these things turned around for them, so I'm not sure why they're jumping the gun, but uh want to get that under control. Uh we received quite a few building permits, a lot of, a lot of them for uh solar installations and AC unit installs uh in addition to all the building permits that Lenar is pulling for for their homes. So nice to see a lot of people um installing solar on their homes. That's a pretty cool thing. It seems to have caught on quite a bit around here. Um in terms of um additional kind of ongoing planning stuff, um we are working with the property owner over at the corner of North and Gordon to try and get his home occupation under control. That home occupation has kind of spilled over into being something much more than what we would like to see. Uh so we're giving them one more chance to see if they can do it the correct way. I I don't know if they're going to get there. It's a, it's a challenging group. Um and we may end up just having to tell them they they can't do this um because they just really don't seem to listen. We're also working with the property owner over off of three eighteenth and Caburn um uh with that uh property that kind of has the uh the pallet business, uh auto repair business. Um they got people living in things they shouldn't be living in. They got the uh box truck condo over there um that we would like to get people out of. Um and we also are trying to get their cars off the street. They've been parking on the street where they shouldn't be. They should be having their whole use occur on their property. Um we're trying to get the pallets lowered from being stacked twenty-five feet tall down to ten feet uh because it's unsightly and and not safe to have them so tall. Um so those are a few code enforcement issues we're working on.
About commercials.
What's that?
So maybe OSHA should does it.
Yeah, that's probably the next step. We're kind of working slowly with this property owner. He's been very nice. Um but I don't think he understands all of his issues. Um particularly the OSHA one. We're very concerned about the oils and the greases that are on that property. And once we start getting some traction with the getting the cars off the street, getting the pallets down, getting the living people out of there, then we're going to go start doing some some DEQ stuff to try and get that all figured out. So.
Uh before we finish up on this one, um they have also appeared to have a wrecking right?
There's a lot of things going on there that uh none of them have. Yes, so those are other things we're trying to, you know, get under control there. There's. Uh what he, what my understanding is, is he buys a large equipment or vehicles that maybe aren't totally operable or need some minor repairs and he fixes them and sells them. So he told us on Monday that, yep. He told us on Monday that he sold nine cars over the weekend and bought four more. So you can kind of see how this is working. He, his inventory exceeds his capacity right now. Um and he also uses the lot on the north end there. I guess that's a a different property owner that he leases that property from. And so we're just trying to get all this. We're just trying to get all this stuff under control. This is kind of gotten out of control. I mean, that is the property, too, and we had that one uh gentleman come into town that uh the police were looking for. He ended up on that property hiding. Uh so there's a lot of reasons why we wanna get this thing cleaned up and and running a little bit better. A curb, a curb, curb stop?
Just so they can't pull in like that.
Um I can talk with uh the city manager about that and the public works director. Um right now, what we did is um we've put up two signs. So there's one sign that says parking and it's pointing to the north along the park there, so you can park along the park. And then we have no for, no parking pointing to the south, so every place that he's parked right now, we do not want folks to park uh there anymore. Um and so we gave him until the end of Sunday to move all of his vehicles on to his property. It was very dangerous, yes. So hoping to get those cars out of, out of that area. Um we told him if they were still there by Monday afternoon, then he would start getting a a citation for parking where he's not supposed to park. So I think we're, I think we're making some progress, but it's it's gonna be incremental. Well, yeah, uh we're, we're hoping for um, we're hoping for just cooperation at this point. Yeah, we're talking about them, too. We're talking about them right now, coming up with the strategy with the new police chief on how to get that uh enforced and and uh. We don't mind if they have their employees parking there when they come and leave on a daily basis. We don't mind, we don't mind if um a customer parks their car there, and then it gets put into their garage when they leave. So the street is clean. At the end of the day, none of that's happening right now, so. Yep, so um they're on our radar. They are on our radar, and uh we're working with the new police chief. Uh fortunately, Nick is very motivated to help us get these things under control, so uh I'm really excited to work with Nick to try and uh. You know, have some additional enforcement to to help get this under control. If people seem to listen a little bit differently when the police chief shows up than when when I show up. I know, I need a badge or something. I don't know. Just this, this is not working right here.
So then uh after that, we have the planning commission business calendar. Yeah, so then we'll move on to item nine and say uh planning commission comments. Any uh comments to staff on the planning commission?
I just have one question on. When I had seen the minutes from last uh January, they talked about the um. Eight applications for lot line adjustments from Lenar, and that's why I was asking, is that a replater is a lot line adjustment? And it kind of caught my eye because I went back to a work session we had. Back in December thirty or thirteenth of twenty twenty-one, and the lot line adjustment code was on this discussion. And interestingly enough, a portion of what was being changed is on the current online version. But not all of it, and the online version says it was last approved in twenty sixteen. So something of the mess with the lot line was. So I didn't, I didn't look at the rest of the code that was being looked at at that time, and I know. See a couple of them pretty good, like the definition section.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. That's uh, that's, that's where you guys are invaluable to me right now, because I don't have all that historic knowledge, so thank you. Uh we'll certainly look into that. I think that was a typo in those, those minutes. It should have said um eight variances and not lot line adjustments. Um so I think that was just a a typo, uh maybe on my part sending it over to to Lori to put in there.
Well, I would just recommend is if you find discrepancies, to send them to Steve, so he can take a look at it.
Yeah, obviously, that would not have been one you would have caught, because it was just, I I miss, I misspoke. Yeah, but I appreciate you bringing the very, I mean, the um lot line adjustment.
Since the last date online is twenty sixteen, even though it has some edits from twenty twenty-one.
Yes, that's what we're gonna have to look into. Uh I, we gotta figure out why that did not get codified and brought over into the code, so I'm gonna have to go do a little digging. I I was not here, obviously, when that that all went through, so I gotta, I gotta go find out what what you did, and then uh see what we have to do to get it fixed.
Any other comments to uh staff?
They received all the proper permitting from the city. Uh I know that the one that's open right now also received all their food handler and all the stuff they needed to get from the county. Um I I really don't chase all that. It's really their burden, you know, to go get all that. But they did receive all their land use approvals from us to go in and open up. So they have approval to bring up to four carts onto the property. Um but he's thinking three will probably be the the max. And and we've not heard anything else from uh G four at this time about their plans.
And I did see the second cart had a picture board of what they're serving, so I don't.
Greek type food, yeah. I was there today. I did have some of the uh barbecue. The I I can vouch for the pulled pork sandwich. Very good, and and the baked beans were phenomenal. So if you haven't been there, you might want to stop and check it out.
Before he runs up. Uh so any uh planning commission comments to city council or X W S E O? Yeah, that moves us into item number ten is uh city council.
Thank you. I uh probably should make some comments. I'm only here once a year because I have a conflict with another meeting, so. Typically, I try to do this meeting in February. It's not because I don't like you folks or anything like that. It's just how my schedule works, but. Uh I I mentioned this to the Parks and Rec Committee, and I mentioned it to the city manager. That I wanna make sure that each of our committees have a good roadmap in terms of. You know, what what they need to do. In in this case, it's a little bit different, because some of these things come for you. There isn't necessarily a schedule until, you know, the precipice is there and and there's some metals and some and and some activity, but. I would encourage you to develop a list of anything you think needs to be uh basically reviewed or. Bettered from the standpoint of where we're at, because we're becoming more sophisticated and more complex, and that's. That's just gonna help guide, and that I know that the the chair is cognizant of that. I'm I'm assuming most of the the planning commission is as well, so. Developing kind of the roadmap for those times when you have that free space to do some of those things that maybe you don't get to do. Um uh that I think that's an important step to make, so. Other than that, I did see a comment in the minutes, and I believe it was Chair King. Who made a comment about, I I believe it was property on commercial, although it was previously the LC one. And I'm not sure why we can't go back and look at that. I'm gonna ask about that. Um because I think that property should be C one. I don't think we received any, any activity on that property to date, and I think statute. Statutorily that we can't, so I I think we should at least look at that. But uh that's pretty much all I have for you. I I appreciate everybody's service. Uh and in obviously our efforts along the lines of UGB. Uh that there's a fair amount of consternation, which most of you are all aware of. So I appreciate that support, and uh as we go forward, we'll see what the outcome's gonna be. In uh in May, but uh we'll go from there. Thank you.
Item number eleven is stat comments.
Uh yeah, thanks, Chair King. Um I I kind of had this teed up or unfinished business, but um. Now that we have all the planning commission members here, um as you may recall at our last meeting, we discussed um potentially changing our start time from uh seven to six. Um uh it would be great if we could discuss that maybe tonight and see if we can get a consensus on whether or not to change our time. Uh the thought there was um one, one, it would help me a lot. I hope it would help you folks as well. It also helped Lori. Um and then if we do have work sessions, the thought was we would hold the work sessions instead of at the front end on the back end after the meeting. Um and so that would be uh really largely on me to make sure that when we're doing work sessions, I'm not sticking that on top of a big land use application or something like that. So I won't do that to you, because we don't need to be here till midnight. Um but I think it would be more something like this, where we have a shorter meeting, we'll work in a work session. So we still get out of here at a reasonable time.
So of the commissioners here, who cannot do? So the question is, are you willing?
That that is a thought. We would still keep our work sessions uh to one hour. That's just sometimes we can't control those um land use application hearings. They they can go on and on sometimes, so. That's why I don't wanna have a work session after something like that. We'll all be exhausted, so.
So it's the consensus of this planning commission at six o'clock.
Okay, well, I really appreciate that. I'm glad we have consensus on that, so look for our starting time in March to be six PM in March and and going forward.
Okay, uh if there's no other planning commission business, our next regular meeting at six o'clock. Will be Wednesday, March thirteenth here.
Well, just, just to update you, um some of you may have known I I was sick for two weeks there. It was brutal. Um and so I missed the work session with uh city council to bring forward your sign uh code amendment uh proposal. So we will be doing that now on Tuesday. Um so if any of you would like to attend that work session and and share any thoughts or feedback on what you did, um I encourage you to to show up.
We will adjourn at seven forty-three.